Can't do it. I'm gonna call to order the city council meeting for the city of Rainbow City for Monday, March seventeenth. I'm gonna ask that you would all stand and we'll have the pledge, we'll have the invocation by Jameson Jenkins to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Let us pray. Lord, we love you. We thank you for this day that you have so graciously blessed us with. God, I thank you for each person here. I thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Rainbow City and ask that you would let our decisions glorify and honor you tonight. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to off or vibrate position, we would appreciate it. And I'll ask the clerk if she'll do a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jameson Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty-fourth of 2025 and not entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number six is personnel changes. To hire Michelle Bailey full-time as animal control officer effective Friday, March twenty-first of 2025. Hire Brent Murray, non-certified police officer effective Friday, March twenty-eighth of 2025. Accept the resignation of WA Riddlesburg at the street department effective Friday, March fourteenth of 2025. And I'd ask that we pass that in its entirety. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number seven is a resolution number twenty-five dash oh-six. It's a public hearing. Public hearing was posted two-twenty-eight and published in The Messenger on two-twenty-eight, twenty-five. Choice Fabricators Incorporated and Rainbow City proposes to abate, Rainbow City proposes to abate all state and local non-educational property taxes and all construction-related transaction taxes for a period of five years. Choice Fabricators proposes to have a capital investment of twelve million, five hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the facility and purchase two new automated stamping presses. This project is estimated to be completed by December thirty-first. Is there anyone, anybody here from Choice? We do have some people from Choice that'd like to come up and just talk to us and tell the council what your intentions are? Just give us your name and your account number.
I'm David Chadwick. I'm president, CEO of Choice Fabricators. I know most of you. Hello. Appreciate your time today. As mayors, we've taught in the past, I mean, this is just another example of us working together, being able to expand our opportunities in our community and for our associates is the main thing. And we're very pleased with this proposal and we've let half of this done. And also, I'm also proud to say that we've actually going, I promise exceed this. And we'll be coming back again next year with another big expansion for some equipment and capital expenditures.
Oh, that's awesome.
Good times and we appreciate that. And that's all my, my associates, nothing that I've done, I promise you. So.
Thank you.
But any questions or anything at this time from anybody?
No, we've been, we've been kind of read in all along as, as we've been able to, to roll this thing out. So it's, it's an exciting time.
Great staff and Christie's done a fabulous job of working with everybody. So we appreciate that. So.
Yeah. And I think before you go, I just want to thank you for what you, what you've meant to the city all along, not just in the manufacturing, but also in your fight against the rendering plant, as well as what Christie has done and your wife Julie, and they're both here in the audience. We appreciate you so much, David. You know, I think you and I talked on that first day and it kind of went from there. But it's, there's no doubt that this city is growing at the rate that it is right now because of decisions that were made back in those days. And those were tough times, but we appreciate the fact that you've been an advocate for this city ever since you guys moved in here. And it's a big deal.
And there again, I just say you, you have to, you have to be a good steward.
That's right.
And you treat people well and you treat people the way you want to be treated. And I think hopefully we represent ourselves well with that.
That's right.
We'll always be a good key partner for Rainbow City and our, our surrounding communities. Anything we can do is, as always, you know my number.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you.
Thank y'all very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I think that's the, the thing that I can't say more. I can't say it enough. And that is that we've got businesses in this city that, that literally give of their time, their talent and their treasure, you know, to make sure that this city runs well. And, and, and that's, that's hard to beat. And it makes my job so easy and it makes the job of this council so fruitful to know that we've got people that care about the city and care about the people that work for them and live here with us. And we appreciate you. And I can't, I can't say it, I can't say it enough. But with that, I'd ask that we have a motion on resolution twenty-five dash oh-six? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody that'd like to speak against it? Yeah, I missed that part. I mean, why would you? But, but anyway, I'll, I'll accept a motion or a resolution to, a motion to pass the resolution as read. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a vote and include me?
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jameson Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number eight is the audit for 2024 is complete. And I just want to speak to that just a moment. MDA Professional Group, they always come in right after the first of the year and start our audit. They were able to do it really in record time because, honestly, because of our, our staff here. Crystal, Karen, Beth, along with Cindy Posey, they, they put all of this stuff together in a package. And we worked side by side on the budget to pull the budget together so that we can keep this city in really, really good financial position. We've done that. This is, this is absolutely an audit that doesn't bother me at all to post it onto our website. I guess some people don't necessarily want to put theirs on a website, but we don't have a problem doing that because we're proud of the work that we're doing. This, this body up here, the, the council as, as well as my administrative and executive side of the city, we're, we're proud of what we're doing with our finances. Well, we work hard at it. It sounds like I'm breaking my arm, patting myself on the back. But I can promise you, it's not an easy task to run a city that has two continuous operations in police and fire, as well as all of the other operations that go along that help to support and provide premium services for the people that we serve. And with that, I appreciate the council. It's, you know, we, they get fed volumes and volumes of numbers and information every month that come out of Crystal and my office. And, and they absorb that and they keep, they stay up to date so that when we have our audit presented like today, their questions are already answered. They've already answered their own questions by, by putting themselves in a position where they, they know what the information is going to read when we get it. And I appreciate that. And so in that, our audit will go, the 2024 year ending audit will go on our website just as soon as we can get it in a PDF format so that you can read it and see what we're doing. It's a, it's a different type of read, just so you'll know. It's the kind of reading that honestly will put you, put you to sleep. But I promise you, it has content in there that you'll be very interested in, in just finding out what, how we're held to a ridiculously high level and standard. And, and our fiduciary responsibility is, is, it's our utmost responsibility. And we take, we don't take that lightly. I promise you that. And this city is in great financial shape. And it's in good financial shape because I think we're doing the thing that a lot of cities may be failing at. That's really probably none of my business, but that's the only comparative that I have. And that is that we're, we're looking at the, the growth and the movement of our city as well as, tonight's a great night for our audit to come back because we incentivize the businesses that we have here now. A lot of people will say, why are you not taking care of the business that you already have? Why are you always out looking for something new? We're not just doing that. We take a holistic approach to the responsibility of, of being your, your stewards of your money and your taxpayer dollar. And doing that, one of the things that we have to do is find that way to create jobs. And, and David and Julie over at Choice Fabricators are creating jobs and opportunity for families. And those families get a chance to go out and do better for themselves, which has that trickle-down effect of taking care of others throughout years and, and times that we'll never see. And I appreciate that. And so with that, I'll, I'll move on to our next one. It's the number nine. This is probably gonna be just a little bit lower priority, but we're gonna transfer to two thousand and eight Ford F-150s VIN eighty-eight fifty-two and eighty-eight fifty-one from the fire department to the recreation department effective March eighteenth of 2025. And I'd entertain a motion that we do that. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? This is just another time where our department heads had gotten together and said, hey, we've, we've, we've got these, these pieces of equipment that we can, that are no longer good for our department. We, not, not that they're out of service or anything like that. It's just they not, they're not functional in their day-to-day operations. So instead of us sending something to surplus to get, you know, a lesser amount of money, what we decided to do was find, see, you know, we're always looking to see, can we transfer a piece of equipment and it become utilized and, and optimize somebody else's, somebody else's way of doing business. And we found that by moving these things from fire department over to the Parks and Recreation Department. And it gives those guys a little bit better piece of equipment from what they have, which doesn't take much. But it also puts them in a safer position and, and, and it brings back that, that pride to their department. And I appreciate Philip Hollingsworth. He's here tonight and I appreciate his hard work in Parks and Recreation to present this city so that, I think it was Jared Pail that's in our detective division told me today. He said he was down at Vivian Maddox Park yesterday and was just, just astounded by how many people we turn out, you know, on weekends. And of course, it was post-storm, which we were glad to see that we didn't get affected, even though others did. But it, it allows for people to get out and, and get it out into our recreational areas as an, is, is a tribute to the hard work that your department does, Philip. And, and I thank you for that. Number ten is the bid for two 2025 Chevrolet Silverado HD, HD pickup truck, twenty-five hundreds, net open sale bids on Monday, April fourteenth, 2025, four thirty PM. And I'd recommend that, that we do that. Any, any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number eleven is to allow me, well, I'm donating a Yamaha golf cart to the recreation department. We were in desperate need down at Soccer Complex and of having a golf cart. I had one at my house that, that wasn't being utilized. I was just, it was just accidentally in my garage covered up. And so it, it's just an opportunity for, for those guys to utilize something that, that quite honestly would never be used at my home. And that's just a point of information for anybody that ever asks, where did we get the golf cart? And you can say that it came from me. And that's what my clerk tells me to do. So. Number twelve is to let the record show that the Economic Development Agreement with Kidd Family Properties LLC, the will o' tree is complete as of three, three twenty-five. And that's reference resolution number twenty-two dash oh-four. And we appreciate the will o' tree folks. We appreciate the Kidd family. They're another group and they're kinfolks of, of the Chadwicks. But they're another group that, that decided to, to, to put their, their money where their mouth is and plant themselves in Rainbow City. And they're doing incredible work. And it, it still blows my mind that, that they can do so much work and, and provide so much opportunity to so many employees here in our city. And, and again, we, we appreciate them so much. And I'll, I'll pass that on to them. Number thirteen is to purchase a Toro Pro Pass, two-hundred base model, number forty-four, seven zero one for the recreation department from Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation for twenty-two thousand, two-hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. This is based on the Optima Omnia contract, number two zero two three two six one. And that's a buying cooperative that, that's recognized by the state bidding system. And I'd entertain a motion that we make that purchase. Is there a discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number fourteen is authorize Mayor Taylor to be the voting delegate at the Alabama League of Municipalities Annual Convention in May. Jeff Prince will be the first alternate. Clark Hopper will be the second alternate voting delegate. And I'd entertain a motion that you give me that authority. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Number fifteen is sponsorship for the Alabama League of Municipalities International Council of Shopping Centers Conference and Trade Show to be held in Las Vegas, May eighteen through twenty of 2025. And that's a strategic partnership sponsorship, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. I'd entertain a motion that we, we do that sponsorship. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye. Any opposed? Just a, just a point of information. This is an opportunity for us to be a part of what the League of Municipalities does when they go out. And this, this is where all the big box stores, where all the QSR, quick service restaurants, go to sell their wares and find them a place to be able to housing home their businesses. And this is, this is a, a unique opportunity that we, we had been invited to be a part of that sponsorship. It's not normal, just to be honest with you. That normally goes to areas that are, well, maybe it is, maybe it is the right thing because we're a growing city. And in the past, those sponsorship opportunities have gone to the, the fastest-growing cities in, in Alabama. And in our case, I guess we made it to the big leagues. So we're gonna be able to go, send our representatives and our advocates out there to try to find something to bring back to our cities and towns. With that, is there anybody that has any, any department heads that'd like to speak? Anybody got anything? Well, I guess hearing none, I'll move, I'll move on to the council member reports and, and comments. And we'll start with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to welcome everyone here. It's great to see folks out here, especially so many people who've contributed to the community as much as, as you guys have. And, and I want to echo the mayor's comments, not just in manufacturing and employment, but in, in fighting the rendering plant, which kind of we landed in our lap just a few weeks after election. And we really appreciate the legwork that you guys did. And because I do think that's key to us being able to grow as a city, not having something like that in our back door. And we really appreciate what you guys have done with that. I'd like to take this time also to honor one of our own, or major milestone. Clark Hopper, Councilman Hopper retired a couple of weeks back, and that's a huge milestone. I know he's, he's been the senior statesman up here. And now we appreciate what he means to the council and to the community. He's actually younger than me before I let that go any further. But, but Clark, we really appreciate what you do. And congratulations on all the service. I felt like our streets were safer because of people like you. And I mean that. Thank you. Of course, he's always hanging out in front of my house. That's probably why I felt it was safer. But the, thank you. Thanks again. No, thanks again, Clark, for everything. Again, it's been a great week. We went to Washington DC. And I know everyone will want to echo that. Being in the, in the people's city, the city that we pay for and we built, is still a privilege to, to be able to meet with the people who represent us and to make connections. There's not any money to go around right now. I think we can all attest to that. But the fact that you're, you're meeting people, you're, you're networking. And when opportunities do arrive, you put a face to the business card or the, to the email. And it was, we really appreciate the residents of the city supporting us as we go on those endeavors because I believe it's, they're incredibly important. And I'm glad to be a part of it. And again, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve each and every member of the Rainbow City community. Thank you.
Mr. Prince.
Try to be brief tonight. Thank you, Mayor. And I will piggyback on Councilman Weiss's last comments about the trip to Washington DC. It was an incredible week of learning a lot and also making a lot of new friends. And some of our new, we have a new representative. We're in Mike Rogers district now. So met a lot of nice folks in his office and got to kind of on a first-name basis with us. And that is an incredibly helpful thing sometimes when you may need some money when there's a little more money floating around. I know the continuous resolution they passed last week sort of hit us at the same time we were up there. So, but it was, it was a good week. I think it was a very fruitful week for us. I also want to thank Mr. Chadwick and his family for what they do for this city. That's been already said a couple of times, but it, it's not just about this. It's about all that you do and what you invest, reinvest into this. So, and, and your sister too, that I went to high school with, Kim. Having them, I got to go through the drive-through to pick up my wife's clothes she bought the other day. So I thought that was pretty cool. But it's businesses like those that you can tell what a city is doing by how the businesses react, I think. And we thank you for what you're doing for us. So, the audit, to the mayor's point, we've got an incredible staff that we appreciate. We talk a lot about how much we appreciate them. And we can never appreciate them enough for what they do. The immense amount of work that goes into all these jobs in this building. People just don't know what all gets done. And we do it with actually a minimal staff, to be quite honest. So they, they are to be commended for all their hard work. Also, to the mayor's point about the transferring the two vehicles to the, from the fire department to the rec. That just shows how much these guys all get along. We're very blessed. We, we cut up a lot. But, and I know there's a lot of ribbing that goes between the departments, especially the police and fire, I found out. But, but at the end of the day, they're doing what they think is the very best for the city and what'll serve the city the best, you know, this equipment that we move around. So we, we don't take that for granted. And we want to thank all of you guys and girls for that, too. Last thing I've got, since Randy's already talked about Clark's retirement. Congratulations, Clark. I'm jealous, is all I'll say about that. He's younger than I am, too, Randy. One of our council members had a birthday yesterday, a big milestone. That was Councilman Randy Weiss. So he turned, you want me to tell it? Is it okay? All right. He's a lot older than me now. He's sixty. So congratulations, Randy. Happy birthday to you. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Ms. Bedwell.
Well, you know he was going to tell your age, but no, even if you said no, you just can't trust him with any information. Well, and I know that Kim Kidd is not as old as you. I think you just made that up. So. Well, we are so proud to have the Chadwick family in our midst and in our city to support us in, in, in every way that is possible. We have so many good, as the mayor had just reflected on, we have so many good businesses and so many good people who really want this to be a good place to live, like we all do. And we're very appreciative of that. And just like Exchange Bank, we, it's nice to see you ladies here. And Exchange has always been just a hometown bank that, that just helps Rainbow City, just like always. So we're appreciative of y'all as well. We're real, I'm really excited about Michelle and Brent. We have two new employees coming, one in the police department, one in the animal control. And it is going to be a pleasure to have you. I hope you plan to be with us for a long time. When you get here, you'll really like it. We all do. We're real partial to everything here. And we are, we're proud of our city. And we're proud of our employees because they're what makes our city. So a couple of things I, I'd just like to, on a personal note, I would like to say that Kenneth Payne, and he'll probably get up and make this announcement too, but Kenneth is in charge of a program that we call at our church, which is Riddlesby Baptist Church, called Beans and Greens. And tomorrow is free beans and greens to whomever might like to come and eat. And this was started a few years ago by Bobby and Donna McCartney. And they wanted to make sure that the city employees knew how much we appreciated everything that they do. So we will look for every one of y'all tomorrow to be with us. And even if you're not a city employee and you'd like to come and have lunch, it'll start at eleven, Kenneth, and go until the beans and the greens are on and cornbread. So we'll just be very, very glad to have you come with us. We, we appreciate you each one being here. And I appreciate the fact that, that we have such a good group that we can all work together and do so much. And thank you for allowing me to be a part of this group.
Mr. Prince. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Jenkins, I've been with them. Look, I've been with these people for a whole week and it's just about enough. But anyway, go ahead, Mr. Jenkins. Y'all look alike.
Well, that was insulting. I'm just gonna skip past that. I want to start by also saying that I appreciate the Chadwick and the Kidd family. And I want to say on a more personal level, outside of business, David, I've been with the mayor many times firsthand. And I know you never asked for recognition. But for the things that you do for our city outside of business, you have a very giving heart and I appreciate that very much. And I know that this entire council feels the exact same way. I also want to say about our trip to DC, it is, we can't overstate enough how valuable those relationships are. Quite honestly, the things that are done outside of those business meetings are the most important part of that trip, those personal connections. And I also want to say that your mayor is unbelievably well-respected in Washington DC. Everybody knows him by name. Everybody knows him by name, and they have nothing but good things to say, and I'm saying that because I know he won't say it himself, but truly, it's amazing to go up there and spend a whole week, and every person that sees Rainbow City on your chest says, your mayor's Joe Taylor, because they know who he is, and that, that means a lot to me, and I appreciate him and the work that he does. I also want to say congratulations to Michelle Bailey and Brent Murray as well, we're very proud to have you at Rainbow City. Last thing that I want to mention is next month, on April the 15th at 1:30, the James and Berry Center will have their pinwheel ceremony, and that will be in the multipurpose room at the Edgewall County Sheriff's Office. If you don't know, the James and Berry Center is our child advocacy center for Edgewall County. They have an incredibly difficult job, and I cannot say that strongly enough. I was able to witness firsthand in a courtroom today how important the work that they do is, because they keep a lot of child victims from having to sit on a stand and testify in court, and it's because these women who work there work so hard to make sure that these perpetrators know that if they go to court, they do not stand a chance. They just have an extremely difficult job. If you have an opportunity to come to that pinwheel ceremony to show your support for the Berry Center, I encourage you to do that. They're currently raising funds. If you're interested in donating to the Berry Center, just go to their website, just Google James and Berry Center, and it will tell you how you can do that. That's the last thing I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Hopper?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, Happy St. Patrick's Day. The things I want to bring up is very simple. It is exciting times here, not only with Choice Fabricators, Will o' Tree, and things like that, but we're seeing growth everywhere. We've got the new rec center coming, the Challenger Center's coming, we've got new businesses all the time, and so many groundbreaking and so many ribbon cuttings. It's really exciting. I mean, I've been down here since 1990, and I've not seen this much action since really the Crossroads was developed, when Gregson's put their grocery store up and things like that. And so, it's really, it really is exciting times for us. I want to touch on a couple of things that, when I was in DC, you know, I had to go up a couple days earlier because I'm on the board of directors, and I'm on some committees, and I just want to say how proud I am of this entire state. I have, I'm up here with people from other parts of this country that are mayor and council, and listen to them, their problems. Folks, we ain't got no problems. When you, when I hear some of the things I hear about them or how some of them behave, I really appreciate these guys more than even the ones from these other areas that we deal with. But with, with that, the legal committee that I served on, they are going to take the approach with Congress about affordable housing, which Katie Britt actually spoke of on breakfast, and making housing more affordable. Now, that is the main section they've done, and we're just talking about people being able to go buy a home. I think it was, correct me, guys, if I'm wrong, did not Ms. Britt say that back in the day, you know, probably our grandparents and our parents, they would take one income and base that on whether you could buy a house or not? Now, this part I'm 100% sure on, guys, is both that times two, both incomes then times that by two to see if you can afford affordable housing. And we see here now, young people, they're getting in debt right off the bat, and I mean, they're buying houses. My house, my little old shack on Rainbow Haven was 42.5 when I bought that house in 1990, and it would last now at almost $200,000. I would have never thought that in 1990. And it's, and we're seeing this all through the country, and that's causing us a housing shortage problem, and we also got a problem with apartments being for senior citizens. Senior citizens who wants to downsize? We're having these issues too. So these are the type of problems that I had privilege to help with this week. But the biggest thing that I think I'm the most proud of, I think everybody for two days asked me, where in the heck is Rainbow City, Alabama at? So I spent two days explaining, we're 45 miles north of Birmingham. How do you get there? What's the town like? It's just the name. You know, the name was just, it was like a friendly, and we are, we are really like a friendly little village, and that was the thing. It was, how did y'all get your name? And we go through the different stories. And I don't think I was more proud to be in Washington, DC representing the people than I was this past week. And in closing, I want to thank y'all too for acknowledging my retirement. I am retired, I spent 36 years in law enforcement, 30 at the Gaston Police Department, and the last six at the state as a state investigator, and half of that I worked homicides. So I'm glad to finally not have to deal with dead bodies, and I'm probably a little more chipper, because I don't want, when the phone rings, I ain't fixing to have to go out somewhere and look at somebody, you know what I'm talking about? But with that, Mayor, I'll give you back the microphone.
Thank you. Saturday, April 5th, 2025, Lions Club will have a Pancake Day starting at 6:00 AM, goes through 11:00 AM. Thursday, April 10th, 2025, ribbon cutting for absolute respiratory care at 5:45 Steel Station Road at 11:00 AM. Of course, we got the Beans and Greens that we have noted, and that's tomorrow at 11:00 for all the city employees, and we encourage them to go down there for that outreach, outreach from Riddles Me and Baptist Church. The last thing that I'll say, and I've said enough tonight, our DC trip was fruitful, there's no doubt about that. There's, there's, there's been a lot of work over the last few years going into developing relationships that we can go up there and find our way into appropriations. They finally understood that this is a growing, thriving city, and for us to be, to stay ahead in infrastructure and transportation, they're going to have to stay engaged with us as well as they do the cities that are regressing. And with getting our senators and congressmen to understand that sometimes you have to lead from the front, it's not the easiest thing in the world to do, but I can promise you this, they know where our city is, and they know this leadership up here to be very, very capable. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you. Thank you guys for being here.